Meeting is being recorded.
Good evening, Santa Paula residents. I'm David Marin with the League of Women Voters. Welcome to tonight's forum with the candidates for Santa Paula City Council. We are going to go through this process with opening statements, then we'll have responses to the questions you submitted, and then closing statements. One of our candidates, Judy Clement, is unable to join via video, but she is on by phone, and we'll just announce when it's her turn to speak. At this time, it's my pleasure to introduce the President of the League of Women Voters, Kathy Morgan, for some opening remarks.
Thank you, David, and welcome to everybody, and thank you all for attending. The League of Women Voters was founded in nineteen twenty with the mission of educating a new group of voters, women who were granted the right to vote nationwide with the passage of the Nineteenth Amendment six months later. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan organization committed to providing voters with factual, nonbiased information, and as such, does not support a particular candidate or political party. The League today continues with the mission of empowering voters and defending democracy by registering voters, providing information about the candidates and the issues, getting out the vote, and supporting fair and transparent elections. The candidate forums are an opportunity for voters to hear from the various candidates and to get the information they need to make an informed choice when they vote. Attendees to the forum are invited to submit the questions they wish asked of the candidates when they register. The candidates have not been provided the questions in advance, and each candidate will have a question, the opportunity to answer the questions posed. We are glad that you were here tonight to hear from our candidates. We hope that you get the information you need to make an informed choice. And at this time, I would like to turn it back to tonight's moderator, David Marin. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy, and it's also my honor to introduce to you the Executive Director of the Santa Paula Chamber of Commerce, John Marquez.
Thank you, David. Welcome to the twenty twenty-two Candidates Forum on behalf of the Santa Paula Chamber Commerce Board Directors. Thank you to David Marin and the League of Women Voters of Ventura County for hosting this event along with the numerous other candidate forums throughout Ventura County. Thank you to the viewers for joining us. We hope this evening will give you a better insight of each candidate and why they would like to serve as your city councilperson. And finally, thank you to the candidates for joining us this evening. We wish you the best of luck with each of your campaigns. Thank you.
Thank you, John. And we are pleased to co-sponsor with the Santa Paula Chamber of Commerce. We have a long history of working together, and it's always been a great experience. For those of you who might be technically savvy, just want to let you know we are trying to include Spanish translation via closed captions. You have to have the latest version of the Zoom app. I think it's five point one one dot nine or later. A lot of technical stuff there. If you're savvy and you want to try and see if you can make that work, you can go to captions and you should be able to see the Spanish translation. No guarantees about how well it'll work. One other important programming note is we record all of our videos, and we will post this video about twenty-four hours from now on our candidate website. So with that, we will go ahead and start with our opening statements. Candidates have one minute each, and our first candidate will be Jenny Crosswhite.
Hi, my name is Jenny Crosswhite, and it has been an honor to serve on the Santa Paula City Council. I'm a current seated council member. I am married to Santa Paula native Daniel Sandoval. And ever since I moved to Santa Paula, I have been actively involved in our community. It has been the honor of my life to to serve you all. We, I'm proud of everything that we have accomplished in the last four years, and it is my hope to have another term to continue asking the hard questions. I've developed a reputation for not being afraid to vote against the majority if I feel that it's in the best interest of the city council and the city. I have, I, there's just so many things that we have done and ways that we have helped the community, and I look forward to answering a bunch of questions tonight.
Thank you. Our next candidate is Pedro Chavez.
Good evening, Santa Paula. Santa Paula is a place like our home, and I care about its future. We, I believe we need stronger representation and a voice, a voice for our shared ideals, one who fights for the needs of the community and one who is committed to ensuring that we earn the respect of our citizens, our residents, and their family. My platform will focus on three ma- major areas of improvement: infrastructure and public services, jobs and building a sustainable economy, and public safety and inspiring community harmony. I'm a first-generation immigrant that came from humble beginnings. I'm a product of a single mom. I'm testament that the American dream is still alive, but that American dream is sleeping for many of us in the community. And I'm here and I'm committed to working with our community members on council to help uplift us economically by ensuring that we create more economic prosperity for us all. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next candidate is Carlos Suarez.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Carlos Suarez, and I'm a sixty-year resident of Santa Paula. I mean, here when I was one year old with my mother and my sister, and I went through the schools here in Santa Paula, starting in McKebbit, Greystyle, Barbara Webster, Isbell, and the high school graduating, and then moving on to Ventura College where I obtained a associate's science degree in criminal justice. I worked as a mechanic for a while, but then became a reserve police officer and worked many years in the police department. In fact, I retired after twenty-seven and a half years, rising to the rank of lieutenant. I thought my term of being a public service was over at that point, but a few years later, I was fortunate enough to get elected to the city of Santa Paula City Council in twenty eighteen. So I've been on the council for four years, and I'm looking forward to former years. I'm currently married. My wife and I have thirty-seven years. We have two adult children, and I thank you for the opportunity this evening to answer some questions.
Thank you. Our next candidate is Manuel Mihalas.
Thank you, David. Manuel Mihalas, and thank you so much for the time. A little bit about me, I've been living here in the city of Santa Paula for two years. I come from, over from Fillmore, where I was a city council member for eight years, mayor for two years. And I feel like I have a very strong background in city management. I worked at the city of Fillmore in their planning department for six and a half years for Cabrillo Economic Development Corporation for four years overseeing their affordable housing portfolio, twenty-four properties of a twelve hundred units, and also with the Turning Point Foundation as their housing director overseeing their their housing and emergency shelter programs for homeless mentally ill adults. So I feel like I have a very well-rounded set of skills from my professional experience, from my public service, and I'd really like to bring those to the city of Santa Paula. I feel like the Santa Paula could really benefit from, from all of those, the skills and experience that I have. So thank you for the time.
Thank you. And Judy will ask you to unmute, and then we'll let you go. You have one minute.
Hello, I'm Judy Clement with a K-like kiss. I'm a local Santa Paula artist. I have lived in this wonderful town for twenty-four years. I absolutely adore it and my neighbors. I am looking to keep this city unified. I am looking to invite others to come in and enjoy what Santa Paula has to offer. This is a thriving community. We have a few needs. I have been walking around speaking to the people of the community and the businesses, and I love the people. I am doing demonstrations and exhibits at the library, and I invite everyone to see the beauty of Santa Paula, bringing jobs, high-paying and low-paying.
Thank you, Judy. We're gonna have to stop you there. Thank you. So Pedro, we will start with you on the next question, Pedro. And this one, let's, I'm sure all of you have strong plans for addressing the housing needs for low-income residents and affordable housing. So Pedro, share with us your positions on affordable housing and addressing the needs of low-income residents.
Absolutely. Well, first and foremost, my background and experience for the last twelve years have been in real estate financing, helping working families access homeownership. So in terms of the housing, when I'm very well-versed on the complexity of the issues, and we have to have a really diversified plan because there's so many moving parts to it. First and foremost, we have to continue to have housing diversification in the type of properties that exist in the community and the properties we build in the future: condominiums, multi-use properties, single-family residences. We can't always just consider building high-end. We have to diversify the, the variety of, of housing that exists. The other thing is to inform and educate the community about housing in itself, how to get on the path to homeownership. The state of California launched housing grants available ten percent down. You lived there for five years. Housing basically is an anti-poverty initiative, and we want to help more working families access housing. And so aside from that rental housing opportunities, Santa Paula housing.
Manuel, same question to you about your position on affordable housing and addressing the needs of low-income residents.
Yeah, you know, I know the, the power of affordable housing firsthand, having worked for Cabrillo Economic Development Corporation, overseeing their properties in Santa Paula and Fillmore and beyond. It's, it's critical. It, you know, the housing provides safe, safe housing for, for a low-income residence that allows them to, to use more of their finances on, on their, 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 their resources and, and the, and the things that they need. So, you know, what some of the things that we can do to enhance affordable housing is, you know, through really making sure that our, our permit process is streamlined and making sure we know where the hiccups are for, you know, where they can hit potential hurdles and work with our planning department to make sure that we reduce those, and then also making sure that our, our development impact fees aren't more than what they need to be. So I, I think I can bring some very practical type of ideas to make sure that we can allow for more affordable housing and meet our housing element needs.
Thank you. Judy, same question to you. Tell us how you would address housing needs for low-income residents and affordable housing.
I think first we have to create more affordable housing. I believe that they are going to be putting up two hundred and forty-three units where the old Kmart was in that lot. Hopefully, they will take into consideration low-income affordable housing. I also go along and would, would check the references of people trying to get into the low income and make sure that they are credible and have a place that they can call home. The rents have gotten way out of control in this area. It's insane, and people don't know where to go for housing anymore. So more affordable housing has got to be built.
Thank you, Judy, and we will continue with the same question, and we'll go to Jenny for the same question on affordable housing, and go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, so one of the things that...
I'm sorry, Jenny, I accidentally muted you. You could please restart.
Okay. Um, one of the, the, one of the things that the city is gonna do is we have received from the East Area One project in Lufthies. Because with that project, the decision was formally made not to have those units built there, but that has given us a tool to help in the facilitation of building affordable housing that in the future. The other things, you know, we need to make sure that we're continuing to look at, to make sure that the city isn't, I mean, everything is expensive right now in terms of materials, but the city is, is looking at, you know, what are our ordinance, what are our permitting rules, what regulations do we have that might be keeping people from being able to build housing? We're also, you know, looking at how we can help partner with the school district and others to make sure that people are able to get better-paying jobs, because that also helps.
Thank you. We're gonna wrap up the question with you, Carlos. Please share with us your views on creating housing.
Thank you very much. So buying your first house is the American dream, but sometimes it's unattainable or very difficult, primarily because either there isn't enough housing to go around, or the, or people's income are not enough to, to purchase it. And sure, we have a planning economic development department, and we should really strive for them to reach out to the entities that provide affordable and low-income housing, for example, Habitat for Humanity, Cabrillo Economic Development, and the Housing Authority. The, also another thing that we're able to do is the auxiliary dwelling units. This might be also another alternative for people to be able to purchase a smaller house behind, say, a relative's house or somebody who's able to, to subdivide or subdivision. But also, you know, in-lu fees are a good idea, but maybe, maybe it's time that we strive to hold some of the new developers coming to town and have them put as part of the proposal affordable or low-income housing.
Thank you, Carlos. I'm gonna stay with you for the next question. We're gonna turn to the economy. Tell us what plans or ideas do you have to bring businesses to Santa Paula and also make it more inviting for visitors?
Well, first and foremost, anybody that drives down the road and pulls off into a community, they want to feel safe in that community. So one of the things that's always important to people is, is public safety. So if you make a city safe, it's inviting, and then also you, with that, you bring in people that want to be, want to live in the city. In order to bring in businesses into the city, I think what we need to do is encourage our planning department to reach out and reach out to all the entities that provide locations to build retail-type stores so that our residents can not only shop, but also be able to work somewhere where they can get a higher, higher income. And I think that's it. Thank you.
You're welcome. Jenny, same question to you. What are your ideas to bring businesses to Santa Paula and make it more inviting for visitors?
So one of the things that we need to do is continue our process. We've started it. To continue the process of making our city more business-friendly, looking at the processes, I'd like to see us be able to hand a potential new business all of the steps that they need in order to get from concept of idea to open to business. We need to increase our communication with the county, even though that's not directly our jurisdiction. There's some businesses that need to work with both, and so we need to help our businesses be able to navigate that. We also need to make sure that, you know, in order for us to attract businesses, we need to make sure that we are able to tell our story well. Why would a business want to come here? There's set data that they have, but there's also data that we have that they don't. And so how can we get that information to them? We're working with the downtown Business Improvement District at improving our downtown corridor so that folks want to be there. So thank you.
Thank you. Pedro, same question to you.
Absolutely. So I've been spending a lot of time in the community surveying our residents, and one of the things that comes up as a top issue is bring retail that we actually don't have to travel outside of our community in order to spend our dollars. And so we really have to attract the big-box retailer. We got rid of the Kmart, but we didn't replace it with something similar. And so retail, a large-box retailer is gonna bring, create jobs, is gonna bring, build more of our tax base, and those are the kind of businesses so that we can keep our dollars here. And also thinking outside the box, if we bring a retailer like the Target, for example, people from Fillmore are gonna come and spend their tax dollars in Santa Paula. Again, the majority of people here work somewhere else. Seventy-three percent of working families in Santa Paula go and travel twenty-six minutes. So guess what? They're spending their tax dollars in other places like Oxford of Ventura. So again, we have to attract retail that our, that our citizens want and want to use daily.
Thank you. And Judy, let's hear from you as far as your thoughts about attracting businesses to Santa Paula and making it more inviting for visitors.
We have a very inviting town with our car shows and our farmers' markets and our little shops and our wonderful restaurants. But we do need retail. We do need big-box retail. I'm a hundred percent with the last speaker on that. We have to streamline our permits. We have to increase communication between new businesses wanting to come to Santa Paula and making sure that they have expedited permits and information that they can start and run a business in this town. I hear too many little horror stories and about how long it takes to get a permit here. So we have to really streamline those applications and make it easier for people to run a business and start a business in Santa Paula.
Thank you, Judy. Manuel, same question to you about attracting businesses to Santa Paula and, and making it inviting for visitors.
I echo a lot of the sentiments from the, from the other candidates, and what I'd like to, to expand upon is the need for Santa Paula to really sell itself. You know, when I was a councilman in Fillmore, we worked with a retail strategies consultant firm that really helped build a, 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 a portfolio of demographics and very, very detailed demographic data that really tells the story of who Santa Paula is. And as council members, I think we've got to go out to retail trade shows and really take Santa Paula to the larger commercial business as a whole. In addition, while we're doing that, we can't just look into, to, to meet our commercial needs by attracting outside. Certain, certainly, that's, that's a big part of it, but we also have to help the businesses, the mom-and-pop businesses that are here in Santa Paula, and help our aspiring entrepreneurs meet their goals and dreams. So I think it's a pretty comprehensive approach that, that I'd like to take and, and really help Santa Paula flourish.
Thank you. I'm gonna turn to a topic where we have a lot of questions, and it's certainly been in the news regarding the police department and finding a new police chief. Judy, you will be up first. So do you think the city should hire a search firm to look for the next chief? Should I look at local candidates? How do you think citizen input should be included in the selection process?
I think that we should first look in, in our locality at the people that value and love Santa Paula before we would look outside of our area. And I was working with one of the policemen that's on animal control, and he was very helpful with me. But he also said, you put out summonses from animal control violations, and people just disregard them. And he mentioned, we may have to hire an outside firm so that we can get more money to these violations in. So there are different things to consider, but I would go first local before looking outside of our area for a new police chief.
Thank you. Carlos, same question here. Do you think the city should hire a search firm? Just use local candidates, and how do you think citizen input should be included?
Absolutely. In the past, we, we've had a policy and a procedure in place, and I don't think it's been changed probably for decades. And they walk over to HR, they get the process, and they go through it. And ultimately, the city manager has the ultimate say on who he hires or doesn't hire, and that's in our policy. So perhaps it's time to make some policy changes, and some of those would include, I also agree to going nationally. One year, we got Stephen Cannon who came from the East Coast, but then we've also had the opportunity to hire from within. If you had qualified people in your agency, you should give them the opportunity for upward mobility and continue the progress that they've, they've gained and earned, and then hopefully pass forward. That being said, an inclusion of a citizen's portion is really, really important this, this time to gain public trust, and that should not just be, it should have a weighted score that adds to totality of the decision this, next time around when they choose the next police chief.
Thank you, Manuel. Share with us your thoughts about the process for hiring the new chief.
Yeah, I think, you know, you've, you've definitely got to have a panel of, of your community members. You got to have a panel of trusted public safety leaders in this, in this county to, to help guide that process. And I, I think it's, it's really important to cast a wide net when looking for a position like, like the chief. Now, in, in a perfect world, we're gonna be able to get that person right here from Ventura County. But sometimes, you know, timing is everything. Some people might already have that perfect job. So you really, we really owe it to the public to, to cast that wide net and get as many qualified candidates as possible. Excuse me, as possible. And, you know, we have to learn from our past mistakes. You know, we have to make sure that, you know, if we're working with a, with, with a firm that's, that's helping us find the next police chief, that they've got to know the, the absolute knows in terms of a person's background when, when bringing them in. So I think, you know, all that combined, I think will really help to make a good decision on our next chief.
Thank you. Pedro, same question. Do you think we should hire a search firm? How should citizen input be included?
So definitely. So the citizens were very concerned about the recent, recent activities from our police chief and the front-page article in the paper about his retirement. What we need to really do is look within ourselves and our process that took place, because there has to be a measure of accountability. We have to make better choices about how we hire people, and we have to really engage community more and community stakeholders. We have very talented people here in Ventura County, and I'm always in favor of looking within the talent that we have, even if they don't necessarily work within the force here. Maybe they're an up-and-coming officer or a commander in another unit. I think we can work with the network of the police officers associations to identify talent that we can help grow and be part of, of, of the leadership of the police chief. But we have a lot of healing to do as well, since we just went through a chaotic position because we did not, we would, we did not vet enough the candidates. So we, we need to get to work and get this process done.
Thank you. We'll wrap up with you, Jenny, on this question about how, what are your thoughts about the process for hiring the next chief?
Yeah, so I understand that the ultimate hire is always the city managers, but I do think that there need to be changes to the process. I had concerns before we started the process the last time. So I would actually be in favor, even though I know that there is a cost to it. This time around, I would be in favor of having a search firm that would help in that process. But it would also be important to me that, you know, and usually there is a law enforcement panel and who helps in the process. There's a staff panel that helps in the process. There's a community panel, and I understand that at certain points in the process, you can't bring the community in because of anonymity of the search process. That being said, before an announcement was made, I would like to see there be an opportunity for that potential candidate before that it's finally, final and the contract is signed to have a, a opportunity to meet a larger portion of the community and also to have, you know, council to be able to know in that process, too.
Thank you, Jenny. Manuel, we'll start the next question with you. And before I go on, I should mention to the audience, you will be voting for three candidates in this election, three city council candidates. Manuel, let's stay with public safety, though. So tell us, the question is, how important are victims of crimes that are committed in Santa Paula to you, and how would you support them? And of course, all of you are gonna say that it's highly important, and you're gonna support everybody. So let's drill into it a little bit more. Tell us about your perspective, the understanding of what victims go through, and are there particular programs that you think should be developed to assist victims of crime? Are there staffing needs to assist victims of crime?
Yeah, thank you for the question, David. As, as you said, I mean, you answered the question for us. Of course, victims of crime are, are very important. I remember my first year on the Fillmore City Council, my first couple of months. You know, there was a, a young man that was shot and killed at a, at a, at a, at a party just outside of Fillmore. You know, his mother was a schoolteacher in Fillmore, and she just, just demanding justice. And it was, it's a very, very difficult situation as an elected official. I felt like I had my hands tied going to the police. You know, there's only so much information they can give me while they're doing an investigation. So, you know, we've got to work very closely with, with, with the nonprofits and the other agencies within our community at the city and the county level that are helping and working with victims and seeing how we can supplement and, and help their work and their efforts to really make sure that families of victims are given the, the assistance that they need.
Okay, thank you. Judy, same question here. Tell us how you would support the victims of crime? Are there any particular programs or staffing that you would recommend?
I would say if the victims are emotionally upset, which the mother, of course, when her son was shot, was emotionally upset. We should have someone with an ability to calm that person down, maybe a therapist that we could call upon that could help the victims or the victims' families to, to level out after a crime has been committed. Also, to let them know that the police department is doing everything they possibly can to solve and to correct any future situations that might arise to give, to give emotional support as well as strengthen the belief that we do have a system that is here to protect our citizens.
Thank you, Judy. Gonna have to move on. Jenny, same question here. Tell us about your thoughts about assisting or supporting victims of crime, their programs or staffing?
Yeah, so one of the things that I know that we already do is when there's been a really Yeah, um, so one of the things that I know that we already do is when there's been a really significant crime, um, we do have chaplains. That support families, um, but something that I would like to see that I have yet to find a good program on. But I really think that all of our first responders need more training around. How to respond to especially victims of domestic violence and sexual assault, right? There's there's things like your posture and what that communicates and, you know, do you sit next to the victim or are you talking? You're down to the victim and and how that communicates as the first responders. Your your presence with them, um, we need to make sure that, uh, we're giving them information that the victims of our crimes are getting information. About the Family Justice Center, um, because they're there to support. Our our families who have been the victims of crimes and they can help them get access to services if they need restraining orders or any of that stuff. They can help them figure out how to fill out that paperwork. I mean, so we really need to be referring them.
Thank you. Carlos, are you still there with us? It's your turn for this question. Bring your video back or did we lose you?
I think I lost my camera. My pad sometimes shuts off, uh, the the video. Can you still hear me though?
We can hear you, so we'll continue with you, um, invisible. So Carlos.
If you want, I can, uh, once I'm done talking, I can sign off and sign on. Uh, but thank you for the question. You know, I. Worked for many years at San Pol Police Department. In four years of that, I was a sexual assault and homicide investigator. So I understand the importance of. You know, how you deal with victims and we, if you have the opportunity and you have a female victim, it's always better to have a female officer interview. But in the absence of that, one program that we had for many years and still exists is MDIC or Multi-Disciplinary Interview Committee where. A victim of a crime doesn't have to relive, like if you're a victim of a sexual assault, you do not have to keep reliving that and telling it over and over again. To uh, different people. You go to, uh, after you take it to the officer, then you go to a a a committee that basically, you know, uh. They interview one time and then after that, then then the victim does not get traumatized. In addition to that, the officers should be given resources after the fact to make sure that the victims are given adequate information on where they they can get post. Incident counseling or training.
Thank you. And Pedro, we'll wrap up this question with you. Tell us about your plans for supporting victims of crime.
So this is part of a national conversation that's taking place in. Everywhere in the United States and and we really have to create a holistic approach and out of the box. A way of doing things and part of that is really bringing all the different segments of the community. To be involved in the process. For instance, um, we need partnerships with, uh, additional partnerships with. Ventura County Behavioral Health and and so that we can help in bringing the training and the support that's needed to help victims. But also we need, we need to train each other because these are very tragic circumstances. And it's, there's not just one partnership that works. We need a holistic approach and part of that is not only the partnerships with the county. Uh, but also partnership with our religious groups in the community, partnership with our nonprofits. Because we're all in this together and that's part of creating community harmony is caring about what happens to your neighbor and what happens to fellow citizens in our community.
Thank you. We will move on to the next question. Jenny, you'll be up first on this one. Tell us about how you see the pressing matters in Santa Paula. What do you think are the most urgent matters that need to be addressed? And how would you address them?
In in ninety seconds, um, so, sorry, sixty seconds. So obviously, uh, you know, we we need to continue to do, uh, economic development and and make sure that we're we're bringing high paying jobs to Santa Paula. A a big thing right now is going to be the process for hiring, um, a new police chief. That is a very. Visible and important position in our city. And then also making sure that. Our infrastructure, our streets, our sidewalks and our pedestrian crossings, um, can you continue to get fixed? So, um, in terms of our infrastructure, you know, we have a five-year pavement management plan and that's worth. Incorporating now, um, the streets and the sidewalks into that. We've approved funding. To start fixing some of our major pedestrian crossings with better lighting. We're working on the process and 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 looking into what it's going to look like to hire the next chief. And we're out of time.
Thank you. Pedro, same question to you. What do you think are the top priorities for Santa Paula? How will you address them?
Aging infrastructure, I think everybody can agree that Santa Paula needs to, uh. A facelift in the community, but also that's part of a long range plan also in getting the resources we need. In order to do all the things that we wanted to in terms of our aging infrastructure. The other thing I would say is lack the economic disparity that people are experiencing here in our community. The average income is sixty-three thousand dollars in our community. And so imagine making sixty-three thousand dollars with the rising cost of of housing. The the rising cost of our goods and services. So basically creating economic opportunity, bringing good paying jobs. Bringing a big box retailer. I'd say the other thing is caring about each other in our community and our neighbors. For instance, we have a homelessness problem situation in our community. So what are we doing to tackle, you know, homeless next? Homelessness, drug addiction, um, and the slew of of social challenges that we have. We really have to really dive into that. More and working in partnership with other community stakeholders.
Thank you. Carlos, same question here. What do you think are the top priorities?
Well, the priorities, um, have shifted just a little bit. Four years ago, they were the condition of our streets and. As was mentioned, you know, we have a five-year payment management plan, which we're in year three. And, uh, one of the biggest disruptions we're going to have is Harvard Boulevard. But, uh, if we want progress, if we want repaired streets, we're going to have a little bit of of difficulty. We continue to have, um, a public safety issue with our homeless. And if it was an easy fix, we would have fixed it by now, but it's it's broader than that. And I think what we need to do with our homeless people is ensure that we continue to fund places like, uh, Spirit of Santa Paula where the homeless can go. And, uh, offer them as many opportunities as they can to get their lives back in order. Now, there is something coming down by the governor as far as a CARES Act, which means that, uh. If a family or first responders encounter a homeless person, they might be able to get them, uh, a judge to mandate some medical treatment. And, uh, and by getting the mental help people some help, we might also improve our public safety here in our city. And those are really vital and important streets, public safety and affordable housing. I'm out of time. Thank you.
Thank you. Man, Manuel, tell us about your top priorities.
Yeah, you know, as as we must all be talking to the same people. And as I'm walking the community, you know, the first thing people are bringing up, they just look outside. You know, as I'm talking to them from their front porch and they they look at the street and I shake my head, yes, streets, streets are are a priority. They're frustrated that, uh, you know, the streets that have been paved are not the, you know, not the ones that are right in front of their house. So in order to get that that done on a on a on a faster scale, we need to support measures that are going to bring Santa Paula additional funding. Right now, you know, we don't have a local self-help sales tax in the county. And, you know, other counties do, Santa Barbara, Los Angeles, when we go shop or fill up our gas tanks in those counties, we're helping to pay for their streets and roads. So we need that here to make sure that we have enough funding to get it done on on a on a time scale that the community wants. Homelessness, of course, is is huge. Uh, we've got to work with, uh, great partners like Spirit of Santa Paula and the County of Ventura to expand our services. Provide some more transitional housing and then also with our public safety, uh, you know, that's another huge priority and getting that situation straight trained out.
Thank you. Thank you, Manuel. And Judy, we'll wrap up with you on this question. What do you think is the most pressing matter?
Well, I agree with most of the speakers that the streets need to be fixed. It it's a horrendous problem for this whole city. And people that come to visit, I have a friend from Fillmore. He drives very, very slowly because he doesn't want to wreck his tires on the streets. So yes, the streets need to be, uh, fixed. And we also have homeless problems and I spoke to Kay Wilson Bolton. And she said, if you have a problem with the homeless. Speak to her about the homeless. So, uh, I don't know. That is something that I haven't really, I have spoken to her, but not at great length.
Have to stop you there, Judy. Thank you very much. Pedro, we'll move on to the next question. So one of the things that we've seen happen throughout Ventura County. Are some cities have been forced or have decided on their own to do districts. To take a city and divide it up into physical districts, usually five, and then a candidate is elected from those districts. Over the decades, there's been a push to do that in Santa Paula and other times there has not. And so the question for you is, and we are starting with you, Pedro. What do you believe are the pros and cons and what is your position? Would you support going to districts or do you think everybody should be elected at large?
So this has been an issue in the community for more than a decade and the reality is. Districts, uh, create a more manageable and accountable constituency. And I'll give you an example. When you have five council members and they all are at large, that's thirty thousand residents, right? So when you have districts, it's a more manageable number of people that you will have accessibility with. So I do support districts because that is what the intent of the Civil Rights Act. Uh, is in terms of ensuring equitable and equitable treatment. You'd also don't want to have the same group of people living in the same neighborhoods, basically governing the entire town. And so districts create that, allow for that accountability and that local representation to take place. In addition to districts, I wish, I think we should really have a conversation about including and creating neighborhood councils. So that we can generate more engagement and create the next level and mentor others to come into public service. Because that's where we need more people involved.
Thank you, Pedro. Manuel, same question. Do you, uh, what are the pros and cons of district voting in your perspective and where do you stand? Do you support district voting or at large?
Yeah, pros and cons. You hit it right there on the head, David. And, uh, yeah, I think you'll see in in larger cities, um, districts work really well. They really help to to keep large, uh, areas and populations manageable, uh, as as our, the last speaker had mentioned. But in smaller cities, you know, it 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 lower, it's kind of diminishes your your pool of potential applicants for city council for the Board of Trustees. If you're paying attention to the Board of Trustees, uh, elections here, we have very, very few candidates and it looked like we may not even, we may not have even had a candidate for one of the districts. So, um, there there are certainly more, uh, a lot of pros and cons. Another con, uh, you know, is when when we're looking at 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 paving our streets. You know, I think, I think you can, you know, districts can can cause council members to be a little bit more parochial as opposed to. Hey, what's what's the plan that works best for the city and the the limited amount of funds we have? So, uh, certainly there are things that make it more manageable, but there are also some cons and whether or not I would support it. The city's going down the path right now and, um.
I'm sorry, you have to cut you off. Judy, same question to you. Do you support district voting or do you support continuing with at-large voting? And what are your pros and cons that you see?
I, uh, would rather see at-large voting. Because we are not that that big an area. When you start splitting up sections of the town, you start dividing people. Right now, Santa Paula is cohesively joined. We are all together in this. If some areas don't like what's going on, have them put up somebody to be elected for city council. We all are have the ability to have a voice in what goes on in our town of Santa Paula. If you start doing this thing that is going to isolate different sections. I am for unity. With unity, there is strength. With divisions. You lose it. I'm sorry, I'm not with it.
Thank you. Jenny, same question to you. Uh, do you support going to districts or remaining at large? What are your views?
Right, so the, I mean, the pros of going to districts, um, you know, the argument can be made that you can end up with broader representation. You know, can make it easier for someone who maybe is a renter or is not retired, um, to run for council. You don't have to engage with as many voters. You know, the the cons are that if you move. You know, you have to resign from council so that if you're a renter, that could make it more challenging. If your rent changed and you could no longer afford it and couldn't find something, um, to rent in your district. It can, it would. It in the school district race, two out of the five districts over the last, uh, four years have been, uh. Elected without a vote of the people. So none of the people in those districts get to vote. But the reality is that regardless of the pros and cons, uh, the city can't, uh, that no city has won. Fighting going to districts that has received a letter.
Carlos, I think we're picking up some static. Are you there? There's some, okay, that sounds a little bit. Same question to you. Carlos, if you can mute your separate cell phone, that might do the trick. Well, didn't mean to turn off your camera. Can you, uh, come back, Carlos?
My goodness, I'm so sorry. I was trying to employ other technology to try to come on, but my video won't come back on.
You sound fine now. So Carlos, the question to you is, do you support, uh, going to district voting? Or would you, uh, want to see the city remain at large? What is your views on the subject?
Well, just like my colleagues, uh, we came to the decision that it wasn't, uh, going to be beneficial to fight the lawsuit that we recently served with. To go to district voting. I personally do not feel that Santa Paula is a city that, um, is racially, has racially polarized voting. But they're able to use the national statistics and even though years ago we were sued by the Department of Justice. We, uh, and the voters overwhelmingly shot it down. But that being said, uh, we are going to go forward with district voting. The pros, of course, are that, um, a candidate in this in a city can, uh, utilize less funds because. He or she does not have to, uh, go out throughout the city and, uh, send out voters or or, you know, mail, um, door hangers to the entire city. Some of the cons, of course, as you've heard, is that there might be some, a question about the funds that are available and some one, if a person in the district wants. A certain funding, they might, uh, lobby to their council member to to look for that amount of money. So that being said, it's it's a challenge either way, but, uh, I'm not for district voting.
Okay, thank you. Carlos, we'll stay with you for the next question. And some of you have touched on this earlier. I want to give you a full minute to talk about your plans for dealing with homelessness. Tell us about the, your views about how to deal with the different types of homelessness, individuals, families. And who do you think should actually provide these services to homeless individuals?
Yes, yeah, well, you know, if if this were an easy solution, somebody would have solved it by now, but it's certainly not a issue just for Santa Paula. We have homeless, every city has homeless. The the good things that we have going for us is we have a shelter. It's run by the Spirit of Santa Paula. That provides people a place to go. Who's going to ultimately take care of homelessness? Homelessness occurs for several reasons. It either is because of mental illness, uh, drug dependence, alcohol dependency. It could also be PTSD, but also sometimes homelessness is a choice. There are some people that refuse to go to the shelter because they have to abide by certain rules. I believe that the the this problem can be handled if, as you heard me say earlier about the CARES Act where. You know, government or judges can step in and and actually mandate for some people with mental illness to to get that treatment. That was taken away, you know, during the Reagan era and ACLU saying that, uh, putting people in mental hospitals was inhumane and a violation of their liberties. So I think the government has a big responsibility to help Santa Paula and all cities.
Have to stop you there, Carlos. Jenny, same question to you. Tell us about your plans for dealing with homelessness and, uh, how you think services should be delivered.
Yeah, so, um, you know, so first of all, homelessness is something that we need to address on a regional and a state level, right? Each city has to do their own part. Um, that being said, you know, one of the things that the city is doing is we have partnered with the Spirit of Santa Paula. We've also partnered with, uh, Behavioral Health and County Health and El Buen Pastor, um, United Methodist Church. And we have services that are happening, um, for our homeless individuals at all those places. We've also, uh, the police department has partnered with the County Backpack Medicine Program. Um, and Behavioral Health and there's people that go out and, um, there's teams that go out monthly. And meet the our homeless individuals where they are, try to get them connected with services or reconnected with services. We're also working on, um, you know, housing solutions, right? It was mentioned that there's different kinds. There's families and individuals and. You know, trying to work with between shelter and transitional housing and affordable housing. To really help those in individuals and families get, uh, connected with the resources and services they need.
Thank you. Pedro, same question to you on homelessness.
So two things that I think that we all should. Try to work on and and because there's, we see all the comments that come about through social media. And, uh, what we have to do is is have more compassion and empathy. Because when you talk about homelessness, there's basically two types. There's chronic and there's transitional. Right? There's folks that don't want the help and the assistance. So that's a. So that's a that's tougher when someone does. But in trends, as people get not for for any array of of issues. And so what can we do locally to help those that are in transition? So that we can prevent them from going into the homeless situation. And so we have to develop more partnerships, especially around mental health, housing. If someone's unable to make their rent because of the high cost, how do we connect them to the services and the vouchers that are available through the United Way, the county? And really, I think we should have a summit to bring every stakeholder together to see what we can do as as one community.
Thank you Pedro. Judy, same question to you. Please share with us your policies that you put in place to help the homeless.
I would agree with the last speaker on most of what he said. And I would also say that we have we have taken a lot of the humanity out of jobs. Throughout this country, people that call companies never get a human person at the other end of the line. They get robotic machines answering. I would say, let's have some of these companies that that have robotic machines hire people actually to answer the phones. And also, I think we don't have enough mental hospitals. Some of them were closed down. So we lack the facilities to be able to care for people that are chronic. People that are transitional, if you have.
Thank you Judy, gonna have to stop you. I know you're not able to see the timer, so thank you for cooperating. Carlos, we're going to wrap up with you on this question about the homeless. So share with us your thoughts about providing homeless services and who do you think should provide those?
Well, thank you very much.
I'm sorry. I mixed up, that was my fault. Manuel, you are next, so.
Thank you, David.
So Manuel, same question to you then, we'll wrap up with you on homelessness.
Well, Jenny did a really good job of just, you know, summing up the the issues, the the collaboration with the county and all the services that the county provides in 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 conjunction with the city of Santa Paula's efforts with the Spirit of Santa Paula. So we have an emergency shelter and with my experience working at Turning Point Foundation with emergency shelter. And you know, the the part that's missing is transitional housing. And that's the really tricky part because, you know, you you've got a you've got the the Spirit of Santa Paula is full. So it's in and and people have have been in there for for longer durations than you would want in emergency housing. You would typically want nobody there no longer than three to six months. Move them on and get them into permanent supportive housing. That that housing just isn't there, so there's nowhere to place these people. So we need transitional housing where people can stay a year, two years and give the the service providers more time to find them housing, hard to find housing in a very, very tight housing market. So transitional housing is what I'd like to contribute.
Thank you. Judy, we're going to start on the next question with you. And this is more getting into philosophy or each of you candidates, your philosophical position about diversity and equity, it's a key concern in your city as well as others. So share with us, from your perspective Judy, how would you broaden city services to deal with equity differences, age differences, even new versus longstanding residents? Just tell us a little bit about how you view it and maybe what you have worked on in the past.
I have taught seniors for sixteen years at the Ventura Unified School System. I've taught art. Art is very beneficial for any age to take them away from problems or health issues that they face. I I am open to being happy with people of all races, all colors, all ages. People are people, we are all human beings. I love my neighbors, I love my area, I love Santa Paula. And I will fight to make sure that we stay together and are unified and are successful.
Thank you. And now Carlos, it really is your turn. So Carlos, share with us your philosophy as far as trying to improve the area for equity across all types of differences.
Thank you very much, but it's important that we as a city are able to communicate with our residents. And as you know, if we're eighty-two percent Hispanic, we ought to be able to offer those services in bilingual. I know that many of our department heads try to hire people that are bilingual. And that's a challenge because, you know, when somebody goes out and speaks to somebody in the field, if there's a language gap, it really makes it hard to establish that communication and bond. If you need a translator, sometimes that gets lost in the translation. Our city does a pretty good job, but as I said, even in our council meetings, we're moving towards trying to get Spanish translation. We do try to translate many of our public information from the police department of the city in English and Spanish. Our senior center offers a lot of opportunities for our seniors. And our city really does in conjunction with like Humber Commerce also does event that promotes such as like Deco Lotus or the sequel to Mile or, you know, those kind of activities that really bring people together, including the Mariachi Festival, things like that.
Thank you Manuel, please share with us your views about dealing with equity and making things more fair in Santa Paula.
Well, you know, this is a point of 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 major contention and, you know, in in reviewing the city's strategic plan. You know, it's it's great that it's been identified in a plan. You know, you 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 can't really attack an an issue or address an issue without first figuring out how you're going to 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 address it within your city. You know, I think I think we can take a look to to what the county is doing with with their diversity and inclusion plan and trying to integrate it within the entirety of all the departments within the city. And and it's key to do this without isolating people. It's got to, you've got to do it with, you know, well, break with embracing everyone. So, you know, those are my thoughts on it. I applaud the city for integrating it in their strategic plan. And I'd like to continue to further those efforts efforts and fund them where where necessary.
Thank you. Pedro, let's hear from you about this equity question. What are some of your views about improving life?
Sure, so the conversation really has been part of the racial and social injustice that many in our community have faced. And the murder, the census murder of Joy Floyd was kind of the the straw that broke the camel's back. And it part of that part of the conversation is, how can we do a better job in creating everyone? Create a culture and environment where people are treated equally and with dignity and respect. And so that happens at all levels. In our in our government, I think we can do a better job in getting in the trenches and going out in the community more in order to engage more with our citizens and create trust. You know, trust so that they can be, so they can see that they're part of the solution. They're also part of the community, they're part of accessibility to government. And so we have a lot of apathy to overcome. And part of that, we're going to overcome it by us going out in the community and being active participants.
Thank you. We'll wrap up with you Jenny on this question about equity, share with us your views.
Yeah, you know, I mean, the reality is that historically, not everyone has had the same kind of access to city government and to have their voices heard. And so, you know, it there's a lot of work to be done, but we've been trying really hard to make sure that we start the work of of letting people know that they're they're valued and that their voices are important. We just passed funding to start a pilot program to bring interpretation back to council council meetings. You know, we've been trying to increase our youth and senior programming. We're part of the pilot program through the state for the All Children Thrive. And our our focus for that is a youth empowerment. Because we really want our youth to know that their voices are important. They're going to, there's a group of youth that have been having workshops and things. And they're going to be coming before the end of the year and giving a presentation to the city council on the things that they would like to see a city government addressing. You know, there's lots of things that our Social Justice Ad hoc Committee is working on recommendations that'll be coming back to council.
Thank you. Manuel, important question here, several, but I want to try and give you all a chance to talk about the impacts of our environment, mostly from climate change. And as you all know, this gets into many areas, the drought, water use, recycling, building electrification. So for each candidate, if you'll share your thoughts about how, if you're elected, you would coordinate the general plan with making the city more resilient to be able to withstand some of these impacts that are coming. So Manuel, when you're ready, share with us your views about adapting to climate change.
Well, you you brought up the general plan and that that is really a critical document that all cities and counties are required to to update, you know, on a at least an eight-year basis and housing element on a five-year basis. But within that general plan, you know, you're required to address climate change either as its own element or integrated within the other elements such as circulation, so your streets and roads, land use and so on. So I think it's really important to do that within our general plan. And to, we got to make sure that we're in alignment with California. You know, there's going to be forces that are going to be driven from the market that we got to be, that we have to be prepared for. And, you know, the only way that we're we're going to be prepared for is if we foresee these changes within our planning documents and making sure that we're that that's guiding our direction with our infrastructure. And and also with the electric charging vehicle stations and in paving, trying to reduce paving as much as possible, so. Those are my comments, thank you.
And Judy, ask you to unmute there and share with us your plans, if you're elected, to deal with some of the impacts from climate related changes.
With climate change, climate is always going to be changing. You cannot stop climate change. You can work around it to help to correct it. And I agree with the last speaker that we can align to see what preparations are being done to promote positive changes. And we can step up and make those changes as a community. But let us not ever forget that climate is constantly changing. We just have to do the best we can to conserve water, to be careful with what we throw in the trash and to try not to overuse any 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 of our.
Thank you.
We used to be energy efficient.
Thank you Judy. We're going to move on Jenny, same question to you, tell us about your plans for helping the city be more resilient for climate related impacts.
Yeah, I mean, we could, we could talk all day about this. You know, but some things that we're already starting to do is get as many green energy power tools as we can. We are in the process of joining the Clean Power Alliance so that we can give our residents more choice in their in their energy, up to a hundred percent renewable. We just received a grant to install our first two electric vehicle chargers in Santa Paula. You know, we need to be encouraging people to plant and 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 giving an example as the city, right? Where we're planting drought tolerant landscaping and more native plants. You know, and looking at at ways that we can do more of that so that we're showing our residents how it works and encouraging them to do the same. We need to be looking at ways to store energy, reuse to reuse water and helping our residents get connected with programs to help them adapt to hotter temperatures.
Thank you Carlos, you're up next, same question to you, what are some of the things that you believe the city should be doing?
Thank you. Well, Santa Paula is one of the partners that works together with the the Regional Energy Alliance here in Ventura County. And they're always giving us information on electric vehicles, electric vehicle charging stations, different types of energy that you're able to use in your city to reduce carbon emissions. One of the things that we focused on is, you know, our trash is is having to recycle and and separate some of the stuff that that is mandated by the state for causing excess pollution. We are designated as a tree city, and if you think about trees, the, you know, they produce oxygen, they produce shade and and, you know, they're a form of life. But one of the things also the city is looking at is changing some of our equipment from gas power to electric. So for example, we changed many of our equipment that mows the parks into electric vehicles. We're looking at other electric vehicles to service to work within the city and put in charging stations within the city as well.
Thank you. And Pedro will wrap up this question with you, tell us about your plans.
So climate change is real, I think we're experiencing the impact of climate change. Well, we not about our sixty-three dollars is what you make. You're not afford an energy efficient vehicle like a Tesla. All right, that's just the reality of our community. So what are we going to do in terms of conservation and and environmental conservation for a community? It's a it's a balancing act that we have to walk through, especially because the bulk of the water that we use, for instance, comes is used for agriculture purposes, which is our number one provider in the region in terms of our jobs and our economy here. So we have to do more to educate and inform the community about what the real crisis is and how each one can do small little things in order to create a larger impact. Because there's not enough of the education and the and the information being told to our residents about what the little things that they can do to create that change and be part of the solution.
Thank you. Candidates, we've reached the point in the program where we're going to start with closing statements. And unfortunately, there was a lot of great questions I was just unable to get to. I don't usually do this, but I'll share some of the questions, just a few of them. So you have a sense of what's on the mind of the voters. And I also want to remind people that this is being translated into Spanish, if you have closed caption and the latest versions of Zoom, so it is in Spanish on the closed caption. Questions about how would you bring grocery stores and more shopping opportunities to Santa Paula? Questions about drug use, what can we do to try and prevent drug abuse? Several questions still around the police department and citizen complaints and making sure the next chief is appropriate. And also questions around integrating the different ethnicities within Santa Paula. But we talked about that a little bit with cultural. One other interesting question we didn't get to was if you favored policies to expand internet access to provide it to all Santa Paulans. So there was quite a few more, but gives you a sense of the great questions that we didn't have time to get to. We are now going to begin the closing statements, we will do it in the reverse order. Judy Clement, when you're ready, you have one minute.
Hi, I'm Judy Clement. I love living in Santa Paula. It's one of the most wonderful places on earth. We have wonderful climate, we have sunny days, we have cool nights and wonderful neighbors. And I would like to protect and keep our community going strong.
You have thirty seconds remaining, if you wish.
Oh, okay. I don't see the timer. But yeah, I would do everything in my power to correct any wrongdoing that I see. I am not afraid to open my mouth and vocalize. I would make a plan of action and then I would implement it if I see wrongdoing. I am here for my neighbors, for the town and for the city of Santa Paula. God bless us all.
Thank you. And our next candidate is Manuel, when you're ready.
Thank you, David. Yeah, so just to to reiterate, I I really feel like my experience as a as a city planner working in affordable housing, working with nonprofits focused on providing services and housing, transitional housing and emergency shelter for homeless adults is is kind of really fits the needs of of Santa Paula. I I didn't get a chance in my opening statement to talk about, you know, my volunteer work. I helped run the the youth basketball program in Fillmore and train all the the sports officials there. I would love to to work with the the sports basketball sports program here in Santa Paula. I feel like I have a lot to bring on that end. I feel like I I have a great reputation of 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 bringing, you know, different parties together and agreeing on the solution and the path forward. So if you're looking for someone that is looking to bring Santa Paula together, I believe that I'm your candidate. So thank you very much for the time and I hope I have your vote come November eighth.
Thank you. Our next candidate, Carlos, when you're ready.
Thank you. My apologies for losing my camera. I'm very proud to be a nearly lifelong resident of Santa Paula since I was a year old. And I went through the schools and just seen a lot of the things that a lot of people of this age really have not seen or experienced. of this age really have not seen or experienced. So I feel proud to say that I've, I've come here and I've made a great life, have a great family. I served many years on the police department. I thought my public service was over until I got elected to the city council. And that was the greatest experience of my life. And we didn't get to finish everything that we started. My, my slogan last time was to let's make Santa Paula better. And we're making great strides in that, in that respect, but COVID put a kind of a slowdown to everything. And I'm looking forward to hopefully the former years if the voters will elect me. And this time it's let's finish what we started because I have a vested interest in the outcome of Santa Paula, not only for me and my family, because I'm not going anywhere. But everybody else, the decisions we make have long-term, long-ranging impacts for everybody. So we got to make the best decisions possible because some, some of them will last a lifetime. Thank you.
Thank you. Pedro, your turn.
Absolutely. So I want to first, first and foremost, thank the 56 individuals who decided to take time out of their family, their family time on a Monday to come together and, and learn more about the candidates running for office. Again, my name is Pedro Chavez and I hope I can be one of your choices. There's five of us running, as you know, and there's three open spots. I have a background both in the private and the public sector. So I think outside the box, I'm innovative in my approach and I'm a problem solver. I started this campaign, first off, my candidacy first off, and what I did is I went to the people. I took the time to engage with the community to find out what their needs are, learn how we can coalesce those needs to create a brighter future for all. Part of my campaign is going to be to inspire others to get involved. I represent a segment of the population that needs more representation in the community. And I believe that I have the knowledge, the skills and the God given talent to do good for the betterment of the community. I asked for your vote. I invite you to visit my website, www.volforpedrosp.info. Thank you.
Thank you. And we will wrap up with Jenny.
Yeah, so, you know, I, I'm proud of the things that we have accomplished in the last four years. We have performed some kind of maintenance or payment rehabilitation on nearly 50% of the streets in Santa Paula. Harvard Boulevard work is starting now and that's going to be an amazing project. Our reserve levels have increased from 700,000 to 3.5 million since 2018. We have been working to increase the diversity of housing options for all Santa Paula residents. And that's a, a big complex issue, but we're really working to make sure that everyone has options. We are working to increase our programming for youth and seniors. We are partnering to help put an end to homelessness. And that's included securing, working with our partners to secure 1.5 million for the expansion of the Harvard Shelter. And just making sure that all of the decisions are in the best interest of our city.
Thank you very much. Thank you to all the candidates. We really appreciate the fact that you all have stepped up and volunteered or have offered to run for office, very important in our democracy. I'm sharing my screen right now to show some important information about the election. As I mentioned earlier, you'll be voting for three in this race for Santa Paula. Ballots will be mailed out in about another two weeks, October 10th. You can track your ballots at a website called wheresmyballot.sos.ca.gov. You just put in your name and information and it'll tell you when your ballot's been received in the mail at the elections. As a reminder, everybody will be mailed a ballot. You can vote via Dropbox in the mail. You could take it to the elections on November 8th. We have some other important information up here on the website. We remind you to keep visiting the League's website, lvwventuracounty.org, where you can register for other upcoming forums or watch this forum in about 24 hours when the video is posted. Thank you all for watching. We will be back at eight o'clock with a forum for the Fillmore City Council candidates. Thank you. And we'll say goodbye from the League. And I want to also, lastly, is thank all of the volunteers at the League. Kathy Morgan, Pat Essick, Maddie Park, and Wayne Morgan, Cheryl Collard for helping to put this on. Thank you and good night.